Okay ladies and gentlemen, we're to call this meeting to order at 7:17. If you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our flag, our mobile flag is over here next to the wall. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At the beginning of the meeting, there will be no roll call votes. We have nothing to vote on, this evening, no motions. So we'll move right into special reports. And as always seems to be the case, I'll pick up the beginning with the IU library, IU VII libraries and Legislative Council. Related IU VII, there'll be a changeover in June. Mr. Leonard will take over at that particular time on a three-year jaunt into the world of IU. And that's something which if you all have already received some ballots on it, we'd appreciate if you could continue on and do the voting process as they elect all the IU representatives across the county at this time, as we now begin a whole new cycle of two- to three-year memberships. One thing from the IU meeting we recently had, and we experienced it, I think, as we presented the IU budget this evening, the IU has spent a lot of time in redesigning over 20-some years its budgetary process. Through Dr. Butler and Dr. Kearns from Norwin in particular, really aspirated the effort to make it very clear and very visible so that where issues in the past made, I'm not saying serious issues, but where things were not as clearly identified in budgetary items so that individual districts address the needs, it's not no longer that problem anymore. And the IU has received a number of accolades through its new business manager in creating this new process. I think we saw that as an example when we passed that information earlier this evening. I'm gonna leave right from the IU and go into the library. I can only talk about one library initiative, and that relates to the fact that there are two people trained by the IRS and are, where we're doing, the library's opened its doors to doing taxes for seniors, and it's by an appointment only, and we doubled the number of, the library doubled the number of opportunities last year, while all the appointments are filled to the end of the tax year. So it's very popular for residents and for seniors, and it's working well, the library's done a, just providing a great service in that area. And also, thank you to my very kind Vice President. We were late this evening for a number of issues that were related, as I would address under executive session, we had to discuss a student discipline matter and personal matters, and also some labor negotiations. So that brought us in a little bit later this evening. And consequently, when we get into executive session, we'll undoubtedly not need to move into it at that time. Jumped the gun a little bit, but thought it was appropriate to bring it at this time. Let me step back to the, from the library and the Legislative Council. And obviously, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the Governor's Budget because they're still negotiating it through it right now, but I will talk about the PSBA. Along with many government structures, we're hoping to do this in the state of Pennsylvania, the PSBA is reducing its governing structure from 28 individuals to 11, and it's gonna take effect this year. Again, more in line of efficiency, again, we're hoping our own legislature will do the same thing. They're gonna set an example. Yeah, I know, Mr. Petrusi's heard it for a long time, but. Any case, they're going down to where it will be five officers elected from within the membership, and there will be three that will come from the district, there are 15 districts in the state of Pennsylvania. Then they're also gonna elect three members at large, which could be any one of us. What they're gonna try to do is they're gonna take us as members and make us more a part of the process. So we'll actually be voting for these people in a consensus, something we've never done before. So the majority rules and we'll represent and identify the 11 people we want to represent us, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. A change has not been anywhere near, not in the since its existence. Okay, we'll go into some other things. I'm gonna ask Mr. Nemec to help me in this area. I was out of state when this took place, but we have the Legislative Council meeting, and would you care to share some of the things that came out of that with our legislative representatives?
Sure, Dr. Trey, I got a few, just a few items. It was held Saturday, February 23rd, at the intermediate unit. Three representatives were there, Eli Avankovic, Ted Harai, and Joe Patarka. And these three guys, they have been there from the beginning. These three always show up and give a lot of good information. Karen Devine with the PSBA started out with a review of the budget and some bills on the floor. Some of the basics, you know, that basic education is up 1.7%. Special Ed is level funded, but there is a commitment to shift some of the funding to Special Ed contingency fund, which will result us in losing about a half a percent in our special education, or roughly around $2,000. Accountability Grant has been level funded again. Plan Con also level funded at $269 million, and with the Governor asking for another year moratorium on the Plan Con. One bill that's on the floor that we talked briefly about in executive and kinda caught my eye is the Passport for Learning Block Grant, and it is, all relies on the sale of and privatization of the wine and liquor stores. They're estimating a $1 billion in sales from the sale of the liquor license to be used for school safety, early learning programs, individualized learning programs, or STEM programs. And what they're estimating the PT, Penn Trafford's portion would be, would be about $475,000 a year, and would be a total of about $2.3 million. And if this goes through as they're hoping, we would start seeing a payment coming in in the 14, 15 year. But it's all dependent on the sale of the liquor license and whether they privatize their wine. So there was not, Ted Harai in particular was not real hopeful on it happening. He himself put the estimated sale at $600,000, which is still a fair amount of money, or 600 million, excuse me. And we'll just have to wait and see for that. Once again, in the past, as in past years, the main topics in the question and answer period was mandate relief, cyber charter reform, economic furlough, and pension reform. And that, like I said, that pretty much dominated the question and answer period, and about it.
Thank you, Mr. Nemec, very much appreciate that. I'm just gonna add on a couple few items that were related to Governor's Budget that are interesting. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but there is additional money in there for the Keystone exams and the PSSAs, no matter how we're gonna use them. We never had that much money before. We thought it was gonna be dumped on the IU's and on the school districts, but it looks like there's some help there. Plan Con, looks like they're gonna do another moratorium. That doesn't help us at all in our very engaging program to modernize in our own district, but we still have all the paperwork in, and we're ready to go. And maybe, maybe, maybe they'll have a little bit of money available for us at some stage. Right now, another moratorium. There's more information about teacher and principals' evaluations, but we as a district in a partnership, teachers and principals and superintendent and staff, and we were all part of this, we have a great program, we have a great evaluation system out there, just the state hasn't caught up to it to approve what we have, which is light years ahead of what they are already forecasting. Sorry, my personal opinion sliding in here again. Bear with it, it happens from time to time. But any case, there's more dictates coming out in that area. There's some information on the, in the new budget related to educator misconduct, not well defined. There's also something which I have to compliment the Governor, pre-K education. He's a big proponent of pre-K education. He keeps throwing money in that direction, and that's one thing I think he's been solid about. Getting back to what Rich said around the, and adding on to this concept about the Passport for Learning, there are four areas where this money that from the, from the sale of the liquor control program comes from. And there, you can take money related to STEM program, which we talked about, safety, also individual learning, or which we have also incorporated into our vision. So as a part of our development, our renovation and possibly consolidation, everything, three out of four of those areas match exactly where we are, where we're focused in our long-term vision in school district. So we see that as advantageous. And here's another thing, the Governor threw the fourth category, which shows his support for youthful education into kindergarten programs. He wants to see kindergarten programs expanded too. So that's the fourth area. And that's all I have, except I thought at this time, as I always try to throw out some educational thought for the week, I take this back from 1990. It was inscribed on a desk in the school suspension room at Penn Trafford High School. I think I put this kid in the room, this is what he said, or she said. "I don't understand education, damn it, just teach me." That was it. Thought it was very profound. Thank you for enjoying my funky humor sometimes. I hope you enjoyed it. That's all I have in this area, and I could turn it over to Career Tech and Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. President. We interviewed three candidates for, as you know, our entering project coming up for the, I hope, the renovation, energy renovation for the Vote Tech. And we interviewed three candidates, and it came down to CJ L. Engineering, Alan Trugot was the representative there. His fee was the lowest fee, $17,500, but he also did something that really appealed to me. He's the only one of the three that mentioned trying to get funding, additional energy funding, and none of the two mentioned anything to do with energy funding, and that was very, I think that impressed all of us in Hollywood. He also, the same, his group, which is headed by Jim Bizini, also that, they did a, they did a plan for our energy project two and a half years ago, so they're pretty well acquainted with our building. And so they got the appointment. Now, the boilers, as you know, I'm paranoid of the three boilers we have there. One boiler's already started leaking, they replaced some of the burners, and Mr. Bracco, they gave this figure, to demolish and remove one boiler is $280,000, and to replace that boiler is $280,000. So you're talking about half a million dollars for removal and replacement of a boiler. Is that about right, Mr. Bracco?
Well, everyone's different. You gotta look and see what's involved.
But that was the price they got. They got $560,000, that's for each one. So that's, and one is already leaking, so that's the severity of all of it. Fellow board members, you got your minutes in your packet, but here's our, here's our, how we're gonna be, I'm gonna be scheduled what we're gonna be doing, so you know, and also every board member's gonna be invited to another dinner. On the 20th of this month, we're gonna meet with Jim Bizini, who is president of CJ L. Energy Company we just hired, and we are going to set, he's gonna present to us the specs, that he's gonna put out the bid. The bid will be out for almost three months, till May 15th. He will go through the bids, and we will interview the final three on May 15th. Then on May 30th, all board members will be invited for dinner, just like we have for Christmas time, and it'll be a meal, it'll about be catered because school will be out unfortunately, where kids can't perform for a second due to Christmas time. The dinner will be there, and for all the superintendents, business managers, assistant attendants, all board members invited, all 81 board members from the nine school districts will be invited. Then a question and answer afterwards for anybody who wants to ask the questions, so we can get, believe me, getting nine unanimous is not easy. I mean, we, I think we have eight right now. Again, I'm crossing my fingers. Before I thought we had six, we had five, so I'm not very accurate. But when one, if one's reluctant, they don't wanna go over $6 million. But if we have a Q and A there, and it'd be open to everybody, and I wanna tell you again, everybody that involved with it, all administrators, thank Dr. Butler and Mr. Lego for their input on this and helping organize all this, and I have a special thanks to them too. But it seems like it's rolling that way. On May 30th, then the Q and A be over, then all boars will receive their resolutions again, just like we did before in our June meeting. We will, I hope Penn Trafford goes along again, I think we would, will approve the resolution. And our last meeting will be June 26th, so every of the nine school districts will have a chance to vote to pass that resolution. Remember, we need all nine. And this is, that's our projected calendar, and I think right now it looks favorable. But again, I wanna thank Dr. Butler and Mr. Lego for going, bending backwards, and they still want you guys, I know we're starting our high school renovation, they still want you guys involved with all your input, because they haven't got this kind of input from anybody else, and that's important. Okay, and on the menu was, this is what the kids did, homemade sub sandwiches, homemade macaroni salad, potato salad, coleslaw, meat and cheese drink, apple pie, banana cream pie, and lemon meringue pie, and we had iced tea or ice water, whatever you wanna drink. That's all, Mr. President, for the Vote Tech.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. And the Recreation Board, so I'll start with Penn Township.
That'll be me. Thanks, Dr. Trey. We met on February 28th. It was a brief meeting with regards to some of our other meetings that we've had, but essentially what we received was from Sheryl Kemmerer from PTARC, an update with regards to the pond and the dog park project, which in both cases, it's weather dependent in terms of the starting of the expansion of the pond and the completion of the dog park. Essentially, the dog park is almost completely done, except for the grass needs to go within the fenced-off area, and there's some other things with regards to access that they need to clean up. But they're hoping that residents would stay out of it mostly until that's done, so it's not a mud bowl inside there where the dogs would be. The pond expansion is gonna be based off of removing the fish that exist within the pond. Trafford, down at EY Park, is gonna be taking some of them. They're also looking for any private folks who have ponds, and not to have a fish fry, but to stick them in their ponds at home. They can reach Sheryl Kemmerer and get on sort of a list. But essentially, it's gonna be a quick thing, because they're actually, as they load the water, we're gonna have to have folks there loading them up and taking them with them. There's some discussion about park utilization. Couple of the, one board member in particular had some questions with regards to the park having access to other activities, whether it's volleyball, bocce ball. And the plan is with regards to park utilization and development as a whole, we'll be talking about, where that may fit into some of the areas that still exist. There was a representative of baseball and softball, they went over their numbers right now, they're down a little bit in terms of previous years. And we did have a resignation. One of the board members is gonna resign here, because she's moving out of the area. Her name's Robin, and forgive me, I can't remember her last name off the top of my head. Tony, do you know her?
Is it Arts?
Arts, she said. She's resigning, so they are gonna be looking for an additional board member. If you're in the community and interested, they'd like it, get in hold of Sheryl Kemmerer or one of the rec board folks. And they reviewed the PTARC events, which, Tony, you're probably gonna go over those here in a second, so I'm not gonna go through those as well. But next meeting will be the fourth Thursday of this month, so. Thanks, Dr. Trey.
Thank you, Dr. Koshko. Trafford Borough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'll start with the real good news first of all. First of all, I'm thanking Mrs. Garner, Mr. Bracco, all the great, great volunteers. Dr. Butler, Penn Trafford News, Penn Trafford Star, all publicly. Turned out to be a very successful auction. Lot of hard work, a lot of excellent people, volunteers, including the Scouts. I don't wanna start mentioning one volunteer's name in case I miss one, makes things a little awkward. We grossed $7,286. The auction area got 10%, which is minus $726.60. The auction actually grossed $6,557.40. The 50/50 got us $176. We got $48 in donations. And the concessions, I thought that there were a little less people this time, but the concession was $100 more, unless my friend Dallas Leonard ate 30 kabashi sandwiches, you know, how we ended up getting an additional $600. The concession was $635. So our net was $7,416.40, which puts us behind by the top three or four of our auctions we've had in the history of our 23 years of the auctions. The auctions so far, we tried to do a little bit of tabulating since this 23rd year, it's probably approximately $150,000 the auctions have brought in for the small borough of Trafford. And for the playground company, you go around, you look at it, and you can see where all the money has gone. It's been very beneficial. Our previous balance on 1/28/13 was $22,078.50. Yet the auction revenue to that $7,416, our present balance as of February 25th was $29,494. Now to our meeting, didn't go too well. Tammy DeMarkey, who's in charge of all our events, she resigned. I'm sure you read everything else in the paper, I don't wanna elaborate on any of that. We now have three openings on a seven-person board, and we need four, of course, there's ever quorum, that's it, everybody shows up, we're advertising. March 8th, supposed to be the deadline for any applicants, and I hope we do get some applicants. But now, we're in this position now where we have money to spend, and we've got to get a board and try to outspend it. But it's, the finance work, the auction worked out great, again, thanks to everybody. But our next meeting date is gonna be March the 25th. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. And again, I thank you for many, many years of work on this project that's just, just an outstanding show of community cooperation, and the community and school cooperation on working with schools.
It is, it is very, it's very nice. Very nice. Thank you. It'd be nice to say that.
Penn Borough, I have no reports. PTARC, Mrs. Issen.
We met this afternoon. The fund balance is up about $5,000 from this time last year. Again, as I talked in the past, it's about, we've changed how we distribute our pamphlets. And also, we are up about $6,000 in registration fees. So the things seem to be headed in a better direction. Well, you talked about the dog park, I won't mention that. One thing that we mentioned today, and this is credit to two PT grads, one from 2012 and one from 2011. Willie Bohens is wrestling at Mercy Hertz, a NCAA Division III school, and he qualified for Nationals, he will be going to Birmingham. And Brett's son, Matthew Lego, I don't know what college he goes to, but he's in the NCWAs, and he also qualified for Nationals, and he is going to Dallas. What school is?
Penn State Great Religiam.
Oh, okay. Okay, so kudos to our wrestling program, they produce some fine kids who are doing well at the collegiate level. The new PTARC sign is up, again, thanks to CAP, working with the high school kids. And they designed a new sign, they put it up, it looks beautiful. If you're heading down 130, you pass the PTARC building, check it out. Also, they're gonna be working on some signs to go into the different parks that PTARC manages. We have our annual report, I have a copy of our annual report, if anyone wants to see it, I think all the board members should have got one before the meeting. The registrations, back to this point about the registrations. The registrations in 2013, by this point, were 688. For 2012, it was 579. So we're up 109 over the last year, so that's pretty significant. And our preschool registration has doubled. We have a new teacher teaching at night, and she's just doing a, the dance classes at night, she's just doing a wonderful job. Okay. Actually, she's a daughter of a real good friend of mine, her name's Deb Reagan, and she's done a wonderful job in the playground program. She's done a wonderful job with the dancing program, and she's just a beautiful young lady in many ways.
Oh, I just had real quick, she was also Woodlawn Playground in Trafford there, and the kids loved her.
Yeah, you just can't help but like Debbie. Okay, a couple other things here. We have a couple fundraisers coming up. There's a chili golf tournament.
Chili golf.
Yeah, on March 23rd, no matter what the weather is, we're doing it. So contact PTARC if you're interested, plus I have a flyer. Friends of PTARC, instead of having their annual gala, it's gonna have something called a funny fundraiser, they're having comedians come in. It'll be held at Pluma on April 13th. And again, if you want some information, you can see me after the meeting, or, you know, contact PTARC. And our annual triathlon will be on June 15th. This is always a great big success, it's for all age groups, everybody just seems to love it. One last thing, we learned about a new grant today, the Commonwealth Financing Authority Grant. This grant uses money for the Marcellus Shell drilling. So some of the money is going back into the communities. It's a 50/50 grant, unless you are a small community of less than 5,000 people, which Trafford is. In that case, if you do get grant money for a project, they would give 80%, and you have to come up with 20% of the money for the project. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Issen. PTCEF, Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Few weeks ago, Jeff Brady, a board member on the foundation, and I went to a PTBA, Penn Trafford Business Association, supper, meet and greet, and talked about the EITC program and how it can benefit businesses, as well as benefit the foundation, and ultimately the kids in our school district. Jeff does a fabulous job at the presentation, and it was very well received, and hopefully that'll bear some fruit here in the upcoming year as people start doing their taxes. We have, we are also working on getting more EITC-approved programs in the district, and that is an ongoing project. And Matt, am I missing anything?
No.
That's about it?
That's about it.
So we'll have more, Phil?
Nothing from me, thanks.
Nothing from Phil. So the foundation is really taking a hold of the EITC program, and I think that's gonna, it's just gonna have really big benefits for the school district, so I'll keep you up to date on that.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Executive session, as we explained, we carried over, so there will be no need for an executive session for the rest of the meeting. We'll turn it over for information to Dr. Butler.
Thank you again, Dr. Trey. Just under my information, I will make a recommendation for you at the next board meeting to hire our own school psychologist. Currently, we, one of our school psychologists, we, we outsource, or we get it through the IU. My suggestion is that for just about the same amount of money, we can get a few more days, and we can have our own employee doing the work. So with consultation with Mr. Carazia, we believe that this is the best thing for the district, to go forward and notify the IU that we will not be using their, their school psychologist anymore, and that we will hire our own. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments on whether they believe that's something worthwhile, but I will.
It's gonna be full-time, correct?
Yes, full-time. If you recall, last year, we did, we hired our own full-time school psychologist to replace a retirement, and that's working out extremely well. So.
So it's not a 210-day position, it's a?
It will be a 200, it'll be a 10-month position. Yep. We are the one that we hired this year, the first year, she was a 12-month position. Brett, you want to do a brief little budget update?
Just very briefly, both Dr. Trey and Mr. Nemec talked about the Governor's Budget proposal and what that means. The Penn Trafford at this point is, at a very preliminary stage, our current expenditures are at $49.9 million for next year, revenues are at $49 million. So we have not accounted for any personnel changes for next year. We still don't have our healthcare rates for next year, so there's still some big-ticket items that have to be considered. Of course, we'll be working on whittling that deficit down between now and preliminary passage in May. But I'll keep you updated and informed as we get more information.
Very good. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Our teacher evaluation update, periodically, or since I've been here actually, I've updated you on our teacher evaluation, and we have a committee of teachers and administrators that have worked very hard to make sure that we have an evaluation system that's fair for everyone involved. And we had ours approved by the state last spring to use this upcoming school year. Well, the state, being the state, has moved the target a little bit, and next year, they are changing their approved system, so we have to get our system approved again as well. And interestingly enough, a good chunk of the new system that PDE is requiring from everybody is based on our system that we have, which is the Charlotte Danielson method. And I would offer any of the principals to interject at any time. The system that we have in place, this is our first year, is very robust, it's affecting, the principals are coming to me and say, I've never had so many conversations about classroom practice with teachers because of this tool. So I'm extremely proud of the committee and the work that they did to put this in, and I really truly believe that that part of our teacher evaluation system that we have right now is so much better than what PDE is going to require next year. So because we are a 15th-ranked school district in the state, I think it's, I think it's worth our while to make sure that we can keep our existing teacher evaluation system with some necessary changes that PDE is going to require. And those necessary changes are that we have to start including as part of the teacher evaluation, district test scores, building level test scores, and other stuff. evaluation, district test scores, building level test scores, and other stuff, okay? And there's a whole list of other things. So we reconvene the teacher evaluation committee, and we talked about how can we approach the state and say, our system is, say it in a nice way, our system is better than what you want the state, the rest of the school districts to do. We realize that we have to have these other aspects in our evaluation, and we talked about how we can do that and how that would look. One of the things that we discussed at length are having student surveys, and student surveys as part of the evaluation process. The Bill and Linda Gates Foundation's doing a lot of work to make sure student surveys as part of an evaluation process is effective and fair. So we talked about those kind of things. We're not quite there yet with the student surveys. There's a lot of questions that have to be answered. But we do have enough work done through our couple, the two meetings that we've had this spring, is it's now my responsibility to approach PDE and say, listen, you know, we're a 15th-ranked school district. On every metric available, we're outstanding. Here is what we want to do with our teacher evaluation system. Please let us do that. And I will be starting that work here in the next couple of weeks. Again, I just believe at the, from the core of my being, that what we are doing for teacher evaluation is really a foundational thing, aspect for the school district, and I want to make sure we keep it. So I'm going to step off my soapbox here a little bit, but I just wanted to update you that, you know, we've had this great committee, they are dedicated, they work hard. We have met since I've been here probably seven or eight times, and they're always willing to look at new ideas, consider everything. We've had teachers, you know, run little mini pilot programs with student surveys, just do wonderful things. So hopefully, when we approach PDE, we'll be able to keep our existing form with the necessary adjustments for district and district test data, building test data, and all this other stuff that they want. Any questions on where I am with that? Very good. That either means you didn't pay attention, or I was very clear, and sometimes I'm not so clear, so hopefully it's the first. So anyway, so that's the teacher evaluation update. Do you really want to know how I feel? Any other matters before the board? Anything that you have that's come up that you would like to discuss? Okay, moving on to athletics and extracurricular, we will have resignations and some movement in employing personnel and approving volunteer coaches, including one to my right as a volunteer coach. Dr. Trey's done that for years. Hopefully, we can get that together. Also, we, I will ask you to renew the Penn Trafford athletic training contract with Exella Health. I will tell you that Exella Health, this is such a great deal for the school district that the amount of money that we have into the system is unbelievable. It's just very, very low. And you, I'll make sure the contract, you have a chance to look at it, and you can ask any questions at the next meeting. Budget finance approved expenditures related to the high school renovations for the month of February 2013, they will be available, are available to you. Just as an informational item, this year, we will award bids for football uniforms. Football uniforms are on a five-year cycle like any other sport that we have for replacement, and this is their turn to have their uniforms recycled. The old uniforms, I just found out, go down to the lower levels of footballs. Correct? Correct? Excellent. Okay. We have nothing for buildings, ground, safety, employee relations negotiations, food service, personnel, curriculum. There's a whole host of conference requests, expulsion agreement, retirement resignations. March 1st was the deadline for teachers to notify us whether they were going to retire next year, so we do have a few of those that will be in front of you. Of course, substitute teachers.
Dr. Nice?
Yes.
Retirement.
That increase in the Beasers thing is over the last year, is it about the same because of the Beasers changing their format or payment?
I, I believe that it probably hastened some people's decision. I can't speak.
For sure, but I thought it would.
Yes.
Unfortunately for one person.
She's unconscious.
Okay. Also, we'll have the final adoption of the 2013-14 calendar. That was supposed to be on the last meeting's agenda, but I did not, I forgot to put it there, so it wasn't. Now it will be. I'll ask you to accept and file the information committee meeting minutes of February 4th, and approve our student assistance program agreement. This is the time of year where we start approving different contracts that we have to run the programs that are required through the state. And finally, exonerate tax collectors for unpaid taxes turned over to the county. Brett can explain that a little bit.
Again, every year at the March meeting, the local tax collectors ask that we exonerate them from collecting those taxes, which now are the responsibility of the county. It's a formality, we do it every year, and this is the time to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. And that is all I have. Dr. Trey?
Thank you. This is a time for recognition of visitors. We have no visitors this evening, so proceeding into adjournment. Mr. Kachasi, did you tell me what time it is?
Yes, I don't know. 7:53.
7:53. 7:53. This meeting is adjourned at 7:53. Is there any objection? We got it.